Call to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners for a work session, January 10th, 2017. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the new commissioners. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, for all. I live in the flag of the State of New Mexico, the decent and proper representative of our own national cultures.
So, those of you here in the audience and out there watching on cats, you're viewing one of the, one of the main platforms I ran on six years ago. This is the first time in Grant County they've had a five-person commission. That was one of the, one of the things I ran on, so, welcome, guys. I expect lively dialogue, I expect respect to each other, to the, to the management, and we're gonna have a good time this year. All right.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda today is the approval of the work session agenda. Madam Manager, are there any changes need to come?
No, sir.
Okay. Just so you guys know, if you need anything changed on the agenda, make sure Charlene knows, and at that point in time, we'll amend the agenda, and this one probably gets amended more than this one. This one's pretty mundane, so that's, that would be that procedure. Can I get a motion to approve the work session agenda?
Some of them.
Can I get a second?
One second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the work session agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The purpose, the general purpose of the work session agenda is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution 1601, we welcome the public to attend county work sessions, however, there will be no public input permitted at the meeting. First item, next item on the agenda, excuse me, is to review the January 12th, 2017 regular meeting agenda, and I will turn that over to Manager Webb.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in your packets, you have the draft agenda for Thursday. First item of action will be election and approval of the 2017 Chairperson and Vice-Chairperson. As a three-member commission, we only had a Chairperson, now with five, it's typical to have a Chair and Vice-Chair, so you'd be doing that as one of your first items of business. Moving on to public hearing, we have a public hearing scheduled regarding any objection to the regularity, validity, and correctness of the following for Fleming Tank Road and Wind Canyon Estates Improvement District Assessment Role Hearing. The proceedings, the assessment role, each assessment contained on the assessment role or the amount of the assessment levied against each tract or parcel of land, and then we will close that public hearing. Is there anything you'd like to add to that? Were there any objections filed?
No, thank you, Chairman, Manager, Commissioners. As of this morning, well, yesterday at five was the final time that anybody could file an objection within the Clerk's Office, and I checked with the Clerk's Office this morning, so no one had filed an objection. So we should be able to move fairly quickly on that tomorrow, Thursday.
Next item is you have minutes from the work session and regular meeting for December, those are in your packets for review. Financial reports, item C, approved/disapproved January 6th, 2017 expenditure report. Lynda, would you please go over the highlights of that, please?
Starting, thank you. Mr. Commissioners, members of the board, in you, you have a packet for expenditure approvals, and this is for the period ending January 6th, 2017. In there, there is AP checks totaling $1,427,952.24. Included in the AP checks are a check to Wright Express Fleet Services, and this is for the November 2016 fuel charges, and that's for $22,187.59. And then there is a check to the New Mexico Human Services Department for the second quarter of fiscal year 2017 for the Safety Net Care Pool contribution, and that is for $92,921.17. And there's a check to Stone Lake Gang Company, and this is for the audit billing for fiscal year 2016, and that is for $51,300. And there is a check to Artesia Fire Equipment, and this is for self-contained breathing apparatuses for the Lower Main Breast Fire Department, and this is for $78,324. A check to Code 3 Services LLC, and this is for radio equipment for the Volunteer Fire Department and for the Fire Management Office, and this is for $27,927.50. And then we have payroll checks for the pay period number 26 of 2016 and pay period number one of 2017, which totals $432,250.28. And there's also other checks for our normal utilities and our normal operating expenses, so the grand total is $1,860,202.52.
Any of you have any questions?
No, couple. Do I? It just goes a couple, but not far. Lynda, thank you very much. The audit check, it's listed as an audit progress check. Do you know what percentage of the billing that represents, or is that the full thing?
That is the full thing. They've already completed their audit.
Okay, good, that's good news, because it's a large enough number as it was. And, in your report, is an insurance fund amount of $228,000, Fund 461. I just wondered what that is.
Okay, that, it's for our group health insurance, it's the benefit for employees. We just have to separate it to be able to do the billing prior to, because we have to pay it before we actually do payroll, even though the employees don't have a deduction for it in the county fees under program.
Okay.
It's just to keep the checking balance of the billing.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I also have a couple of clarifying questions. Can you explain to me what HCP Systems Inc. is, a check for $26,000?
HCP, um, Healthcare Partners, that's the contractor we have that provides inmate medical at the detention center. Been pretty running.
So that's onsite medical?
Yes.
Okay. And then, there's a line item for a feasibility study to Steve House?
That is an engineer we contracted with to do a feasibility study for solar, to install solar at county facilities.
Right, yep, yep, okay. This is just, these are just clarifying questions, so...
No problem.
I'm gonna have a lot at some point, so... And can you explain to me why there's, on some employees, there's more than one entry in the payroll? So it looks like they have a monthly payroll, and then there's some sub-things?
That is a first example with the Sheriff's Office, they work overtime through a grant, and so we have to post that entry into whatever fund that grant is, so it's gonna separate it.
So you have all your funds separated into different accounts, and then draw out of that?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I was wondering about that, too, and there's also the case that, they're listed twice, checks, reports, and then the direct deposits, which are different amounts because the direct deposit's just the net.
Right.
Took me a little while to figure out that.
Yeah. I had a little, little fun with that one, also. The last one I had was, there was an expenditure to Don Chalmers Ford for $4,300. I was just wondering why, whatever was purchased from Chalmers, we didn't purchase it from Lolly?
I believe that was equipment for a Sheriff's Department vehicle, which is not something typically Lolly has available.
Okay.
I understand they're getting to where they can do that, though.
Great.
Yes, we did.
Obviously, we wanna keep all of our pennies in Grant County.
Correct, I did receive notification from Lolly that they, they are honoring the fleet pricing for the state, so we'll be using that as well.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on, new business. Item D, High Desert Humane Society Annual Report. Heidi Ogas will be here to give her annual Humane Society report. There's a copy of her report in your packet for your review. Questions? No? Item E, approved/disapproved inventory deletion of four printers for the Grant County Sheriff's Department. Those items are listed in your packet as well. Statute and administrative code requires that the county commission approve of any deletion from the inventory, that's why those things come before you.
No matter how small?
No matter how small. If it once was put on, and I know where you're going, if it was once put on our inventory, we have to take action to remove it from the inventory. I agree with you, this should've been on non-capital inventory, and we shouldn't be doing this, but it's on there, so we have to take action to remove it. Item F, approved/disapproved 2017 committee assignments. This list was also in your packets for your review. Would you like me to go through each of those? Would you prefer I go through each of those? Later.
I'd just like to know how the assignments were selected.
Typically, what happens is whoever's the sitting chairman makes those appointments. The chairman has, does have that authority to appoint members of the board to certain committees or other citizen boards, and so that's where those came from. If you object to any of those, now's the time to discuss that, and we can, we can make those adjustments before you approve them on Thursday.
I have some questions about them before I know if I object or not.
Sure.
If now's an okay time, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
What is the Eco-Watershed assignment?
Well, you know, I'm gonna yield to Commissioner Ramos.
Well, we created the Eco-Watershed Board probably three years ago now, and what we've been doing is we've gone all the different entities in the area that deal with their watersheds, which include the Forest Service to a great extent, and we go over the different areas where they have been thinning, what projects they have going, plus, we're hoping to start putting in for grants to help them with their thinning projects and different projects that they've got. Okay, that's, that's, in a synopsis, a small synopsis, that's, that's basically it.
I would dig into that existence. But it's hard to go through and try to break them up, and once we realize we can put two Commissioners on committees now, it made it a lot easier, so you'll see your name several times. That way, we have good representation all the way around, and we have a good breadth of knowledge when you come back to the, to the commission meeting to, to give those reports.
Would it be inappropriate for me to request, it looks like there was only one Commissioner assigned to that board?
To which board?
Eco-Watershed, Eco-Watershed?
Commissioner Ramos should be on it.
Yes, he is.
And you.
I don't believe I was listening.
He was.
Yeah, we can do that.
It's not inappropriate for some reason, it's certainly an interest of mine.
That was actually in my mind, I don't, I think we...
It wasn't on your set.
I was reading your mind, which is a good...
No, I welcome his help, I mean, especially if that's something you really find...
I might not be much help, but I'll learn a lot.
You can be in charge of the budget.
So then, I would also like to put my name forth to be on the Grant County Water Commission as well. I just see one Commissioner on that as well.
That's fine with me. And is that one, though, that we serve with the mayors and...
Yes, and there's only one appointment.
Yeah, there's only one from that. Would you like to be the alternate?
Sure.
Happy to see that I'm on a person rec, with Commissioner Billings. Is there a chair, someone I can contact?
I actually chaired, I actually phoned that committee myself.
You phoned that committee.
But, I mean, now that I'm on the Board of Directors, I mean, I really...
So there is not a chair currently, so when you meet, you'll have to organize.
And Commissioner Ramos can tell me when we'll meet?
As the outgoing chair, is that how? We usually meet around the 16th of the month, but being that we have the legislative session, we probably won't meet till February.
Why don't you just get with Charlene?
Yeah, well, perfect. We'll get a good date.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, does it have to be just the only Commissioners? Could it be a assessor, treasurer, probate judge? Does it have to be multiple Commissioners?
This isn't just, this is just the Commissioner appointments.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Oh, because of the, the one that Ramos has for, you know, for...
Are you interested?
Absolutely.
For Parks and Rec?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, because it looks like there are non-Commissioners listed here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just thought I'd bring that up, too.
It's a committee of seven, and we welcome more people wanting to participate, because when we first started it, we only had the seven that actually put in to, to serve on the board, so we, I mean, we can have nine, we just want an odd number for voting purposes.
Okay, that's good.
But we've got to also remember, these aren't policymaking boards, they're just recommendation boards to the actual commission.
Thank you very much. So anyway, the rest, that'll be filled out soon. Anything else?
It looks like you've already decided on an alternate for the NMS cap entity. Mr. Billings, that's something you're interested in doing?
I think so, yeah. Okay. Yes, sir, I think so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was true, I would hate to have someone assigned to an important post who wasn't interested in it. That, as people know, is certainly a close interest of mine, but I do not need to be on the board to, to follow its activities. I think that was it for my questions. Okay?
Okay.
Let's move on.
Item G, approved/disapproved the 2017 Volunteer Fire and Rescue Annual Elections of Officers. This is a consent agenda, consent agenda item for the following departments. Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Sapiro Creek Volunteer Fire and Rescue, San Arida Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Whiskey Creek, Tyrone, Fort Baird, Lower Members, Upper Members, and Cliff Gila. It is, the Volunteer Fire Departments hold their elections and then put forth their choice, and it is approved by the commission, just a formality that you do every year. And I did not see any changes in chiefs or assistant chiefs in any of those departments, so leadership is staying the same.
Yeah, I think you did a great job, Ross.
Thank you. Item H, approved/disapproved the Annual Service Report and EMS Fund Act Local Funding Program Application for Fiscal Year 2018, consent agenda item for the following departments. Gila Valley, Pinos Altos, Whiskey Creek, Gila Regional, Tyrone White Signal District 1, Tyrone Flying A, and Wind Canyon District 2, Tyrone Hatchita District 3. This is the annual funding application for EMS departments in the county that are, that are volunteers, and typically, they use this money for training and purchase of supplies, and this is their annual funding that they get each year. No questions?
And it comes from where?
The state, and its department.
Same thing, they do all the work, we just, it's a formality to approve.
Yes.
The work was the good part.
We've been right through a bunch of people with that.
Boy, you're not kidding.
I heard a lot of opinions in there.
Moving on, item I, discussion regarding Gila Regional Medical Center. I've had several of the commissions request discussions, so I put this on the agenda for you to have some open dialogue regarding Gila Regional Medical Center. And at any time you prefer me to remove these items, now's the time to let me know.
You can add or delete an item off of this agenda today. I just wanted if the folks who recommended including that want to give me a heads-up what I should be prepared for on Thursday, or, or not.
So is that, we, we are discussing that today, or we're discussing that on Thursday?
You're discussing that on Thursday.
But if, for example, somebody wants me to come prepared having thought about some issue?
So who put it on the agenda?
I had contact from several on the board, and it, it's, if you have nothing to say, you have nothing to say, it's just an open discussion.
I was in conversation about asking Abby to see if it would be appropriate to appoint a Commissioner to the Board of Trustees. I know Abby has had an opinion on that, which I don't believe has changed, but she did say that she would ask the Attorney General again, and I don't know if that's what it was...
If that's the topic, then we'll talk about that on Thursday, that's...
I didn't know if that was the topic, because I was not one of them that asked for that.
I had a couple of other things, and one was, so, and I think the clarification on the appointment to the Board of Trustees was for non-voting, to discuss a non-voting member. And then, I've gotten a fair amount of feedback from the public about having public conversation about critical access, and what the impact of that would be to the hospital and the community. And then, the other two things that I would be interested in discussing is, but actually, it's one thing, is in addition to having the CEO report to the Board of Commissioners, is to have the Chair of the Trustees do a trustees' report to the Commissioners.
On their monthly reports?
Yep.
And I'm not even totally sure that we can demand them to do that. It's more of a...
An ask, a nice ask, yep, and I'm...
And I've got no problem asking both of them to do that. They were both aware that we were meeting today, I think they're probably up to their ears this week, so I think they get a, a bye.
Yeah.
But, yes.
I just wanted to clarify, I haven't asked AG an opinion on that particular, but we could discuss whether you would like us to proceed with that on Thursday.
And that's, that's what I actually said, was whether or not we wanted to ask you to ask.
Got you.
With that being said, if those are the subject items, I say we leave it on the agenda and discuss. Now, as far as the critical access, I'm wondering if something more effective wouldn't be to have a joint hearing, not, hearing may not be the right word, public input, input session with the Board of Trustees and the Commissioners.
I would be in favor of that.
But we would need to advertise that, and let people come, and maybe we can get somebody to give them a little presentation prior to, so they know what that is, and then take input from the public. Now, be careful, we don't have a vote on that.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah. I just, I think that, I've had enough conversation with people in the community that are really interested in what's happening, that I think it would be very productive.
They should be very interested in what's happening.
I agree.
And it seems like everywhere we go, the conversations start.
That's right.
And we're in a difficult position because the hospital may be the biggest asset in the county financially, and the commission is ultimately responsible for that, yet there's this, the trustees are responsible, and there seems to be a layer of, there seems to be a veil of disconnect between, that has existed between the trustees and the Commissioners. And I have, I'll have questions Thursday relative to that, getting reports from, from the trustees, and the public has a lot of questions that's been brought up that I, as a Commissioner, can't answer, and so I think if we had more information, we'd, we'd be better prepared to answer those questions.
And there's some of those questions, quite frankly, Commissioner Billings, that you probably shouldn't be able to answer. Some of that is the Board of Trustees' duty, and that's exactly what that law was written for, is to disconnect a political entity from that in some regards. But I agree with you that you also have to be very cognizant of the fact that it probably is our largest holdings in the county, so...
And I think it would be, I think it would be a great opportunity for the, the public to talk directly to the trustees.
Absolutely, and they ought to be going to their meeting.
That's true. Yep.
They have public input every, every meeting, and nobody shows up. Isn't that true?
Yes, sir.
Indeed.
Thanks for that, I'll be better prepared for Thursday. I didn't mean to make us have the discussion now, I just wanted to know the topics.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, moving on. Item J, 2017 Annual Assessors' Report pursuant to NMSA 73616-E. This is an annual report that the assessor presents to the commission, and he will be doing that on Thursday.
I want to get this report out of the box, just to check that, you know, we have a lot going on in the assessor's office, plus our rendition period has completely changed from last year and the year before, and we found a lot of the accounts that need to be placed on the rolls. One other thing that I would like to discuss is that for the, all the Commissioners from here on, when any information comes out of the assessor's office, it will be emailed to you, so you can have it accessed off your phones, or your laptops, or whatever the case may be, way beforehand, so you can have an understanding of what's going on in the assessor's office, because there's a lot of interesting things that will be coming down the pike, not only through legislation on the cap. Matter of fact, we just got an email about the increase in the cap, we did a presentation in front of the Tax Revenue Stabilization Committee, and they want more data from the assessor's office, and it's really gonna affect not only on the 3% cap, 5%, 7%, and 10% caps, and it's also broken down by income, and it's a very important issue, so I'm gonna start shipping all this information on over to you guys, so it takes a little while to understand this, so, and I want to thank you guys coming in, asking for information, and I really appreciate that. So, a lot of this stuff, all of this stuff will be sent through your email, and thanks to Denisha Lucero in my office with the experience that she's had in the county manager's office, she's in my office now, so she has a pretty good understanding, shipping all this information on over to you guys, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Make sure Denisha emails us each individually?
Yes, that's exactly, and I spoke to the county manager and all for the county attorney, who are, yeah, have to be specifically individually, not a group email, and I will not do that. Anything else that comes out will be specifically, and it'll be coming out of my email. Thank you very much.
And so you guys know, if you get a group email, do not send it back out, it's a violation.
Thank you very much. Chairman, Board Members?
Any questions for Rob? Item K, approved/disapproved grant of utility easement to the Town of Hurley in relation to the regional waste, not waste, it should be regional water project. This was, typo is corrected for the agenda on Thursday.
So it should be regional water project?
Regional water project.
So we can cut out waste and treatment?
Yes. And this is an easement the county is granting for installation of water lines.
I have something to print on that.
I haven't verified, man, I thought I was crazy.
Are you on K?
I am on K, and my K is an entirely different subject.
Yeah, he said K is on two threes. Our K is on three threes.
Uh-oh. It's the 3rd.
Okay. I have a guess.
I think it'll probably, after that one, it may not be the right letter, so it'll probably be the right item.
I, I hope so.
Everybody gets a chunk of coal to throw at Abby when they go by her office.
Oh, now I have it.
See, you asked for help, we're here, everybody, everybody come there.
Next item, not sure what number or letter it is in your packet. Approved/disapproved Amendment Number 1 to Agreement Number A1620, grant agreement with the Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division, for the fiscal year 2017 DWI Grant 17DJG10. Randy, oh, that's Cindy, I was gonna, I didn't see you a few minutes ago, Cindy's going to explain the changes.
Hi, Cindy.
Good morning.
She is our DWI Coordinator for the county.
I know some of most of you. So again, Cindy McLean, Grant County DWI Prevention Program Coordinator. Know that our money all comes from the state, and there's two different batches of it, it's all written into law, but we get grant money, and we fill out applications for this money. So our grant money, we decide how much we're gonna apply for based on our needs, and then we're approved or disapproved. The distribution money is a whole different set of, a different way, they, we just got our amount that they think that we're gonna get for next year, and the distribution money is based on gross receipts taxes, alcohol sales, how many alcohol-related crashes there were in a given number of years, it's all written into law. And what we had problems with this past year was, as you know, them raiding the funds that were just sitting there. that were just sitting there, and they thought, okay, we need this money, so we're going to take the money from these funds that aren't needed. Well, ours was needed, and it was just incorrect data given to our legislators, and so we lost almost about 38% of our budget. And we're making it, but in the meantime, I had the shift money, I had to take it from the grant, some deletions from the grants, like our law enforcement contracts, so we don't do law enforcement now. I took out Coricantinas money from here, but because Coricantinas, Coricaminos runs on federal, it was October 1st, mine ends June 30th and begins July 1st. My new fiscal year, which will get more money, will be before the end of their fiscal year, so we'll still be okay for their fiscal year. FY17. You understand? So we figured a way to do it without cutting Coricantinas services. That's what it came down to. So this here, distribution, I can kind of move money around as needed without getting County Commissioners' signatures or anything, we just have our Planning Council, and they approve things. But grant is different. That has to be signed, and it's a grant agreement. So that's what this is today. This was the shift of money, no change in the total amount on the grant agreement, just a change in what we're spending it on. So money just shifted around, and that's what this is. And I'll stand for any questions.
So I just have a clarifying question. So you said that the state clawed back 38% of your budget this year?
Yes. Yes, and then that happened across all 33 DWI programs. We all lost about 38% from what the original budget was that they told us last year.
So this is money that the state allocated to you?
Yes.
That you budgeted?
Yes.
Had budgeted?
Mm-hmm.
And...
Sucked it away.
It was committed, I guess is the word I really want. It was committed to things, and they just came in and hoovered it up.
Yes, assuming they thought it was, because Tax and Rev, you know, they collect those funds, we get them quarterly, and so they sit there, and so they thought, well, it's just sitting there, they're not using it. And you know what happened with all those funds they thought weren't using? They took them. And there was actually, last year, a big pot, couple years ago, Tax and Rev made a mistake, and they gave us, they forgot to give us money, so then when they gave it, it just sat there for a while. And, you know, we don't try and just spend money frivolously. So DFA isn't going to just go, okay, can you use $600,000 right now? Sure, take it. Well, we can't use $600,000 well for this program, and so we were, they were metering it out, and it sat there, and so they went, they just took it to help the state. And that one, we understood. After that, it was money that was supposed to be for our funds, and they were given incorrect, again, incorrect data, and...
And you have had a discussion with our local legislators about this issue?
Yes, everybody, so very well aware.
Constantly.
Okay, I figured, but just kind of put it out.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Cindy, if the Board of Planning Council, when the meetings are, if they're able to attend, you're welcome, if there is public input.
Sure, and I can put names on it, but I don't know if you guys are allowed to get it. Understanding, I can't send out mass things?
Right.
Okay. So our Planning Council meets...
You can consider it five times.
What, five times?
You can consider it five times.
I will. The Planning Council, by law, every DWI program has to have like a Planning Council, because it, you know, it's not right for me to make the decisions about this money, how it needs to be spent in our program. So we try to get different agencies represented on there, and law enforcement, and treatment, and all these different sectors, and they, we decide, and we look at the gaps and needs in our community, so that's how it's decided. We now meet every other month, and today's my meeting, 11:30 to 12:30. And actually, I just got today our new budget, our new budget amount for next fiscal year, so we'll be talking about that. And I can send you, if you'd like, I can send you out separately, notices when the meetings are, or I can send you out just a minute, if you'd like to just keep, keep track of it that way. It's up to you.
Minutes will be available for you?
Minutes?
Okay.
Two minutes will be available. Thank you.
We'll do that.
Put them in the boxes.
If you don't want, just send it out five separate times. Is it possible for her to send it to you, and you send it to her?
No, I can do that.
To burn the debt, and we can distribute it for you.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? No?
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Moving on to resolutions. Item M, approved/disapproved Resolution R 1701, Open Meetings Act for 2017. We made some minor changes from last year's changing chairman to chairperson, that's gender neutral now. Item number three, it states that our meetings are, actually, that's incorrect, there we go, third Thursday, except for March, and if you notice in your packets, we have a schedule of the meetings. I tried to dodge spring breaks, so hopefully we didn't interfere with Silver or Cobre's or Aldo's spring break, I think.
Very good.
Well, that was actually, the chairman caught that one for me, so... And the only other, the only other change is item 19, which gives the ability for a Commissioner who is unable to attend a meeting in person to participate by some form of electronic communication. So if you don't actually miss a meeting, you can call in.
Yeah. All this, if...
One of you sees a date out there where you can't attend, it's not our goal for you to miss a meeting. We want to work it, so if you see a date out there, get with Charlene, and let's see if we can't work a date in where everybody can be here. It's more important that we're all here, and all are in the discussion, than to set a meeting date, say that's the only time it can be.
Thank you. So item number five, it says work sessions shall be held twice monthly on the Tuesday proceeding, but the schedule is just once, so it is once, correct?
Yes, we'll change that. Item five, so reflects when we had meetings twice, and, yeah, we had two meetings a month. Change it up.
I believe that's per speaker. It looks like it's the entire session that's five minutes. That'd be better.
Okay.
And you already added the March to the item three, you said, right?
Well, usually the meetings are in the...
Yeah, it's just that item three says except the January one, but it should say except January and March.
We can add that, we can, yes, I'll add language for March.
Just to be consistent.
Any other changes or additions? So? Moving on to the next item, N, approved/disapproved Resolution Number R 1702, Notice of Intent to Consider Low-Income Rebate Ordinance. I'll let Abby review this quickly.
Mr. Chairman, this is something that you probably have learned about recently, that we need to consider, the Commissioners need to consider every couple years in the odd year, and you're supposed to have a hearing in the month of January to consider the ordinance. So what's before you on Thursday is a resolution providing notice of intent to consider that ordinance, and so I would, I will recommend on Thursday that you do approve that, so that you can go ahead and consider the ordinance, and that's just required by law. Unfortunately, we're running out of time in January, so we have the conference in the week of the 16th, so I was hoping when we come back, we could have a special meeting, and I thought perhaps we could talk about that today. I think it was the 27th, the 30th. Charlene's calendar is easier than mine. I don't know if you can make that decision today, and we can put it into the ordinance?
I can't do it on 27th.
No, 27th? Okay.
First, right, because of Grant County Day?
That's correct as well, so it looks as though the 30th.
Would that work? Because I can go ahead and put it in to the resolution today.
30th works for me.
So they have the actual hearing?
Yes, and we'll just put it in the meeting, just like our normal meeting, we'll call the special meeting, and you'll have the hearing in there, I guess. Anyway, the special meetings work as we give three days' notice, you probably saw that in your open meetings resolution. As far as the ordinance itself and the rebate, if you review that draft ordinance that's attached to the resolution, it'll give you a pretty good idea of how this works. One, well, you may have an opinion that there's many risky things about this, but certainly one of them is this is an unknown number that the county will have to pay back, so just keep that in mind if you would like. I did some calculations the first time we considered it several years ago, and came up with kind of an idea of what it might look like, based on Santa Fe, who has a, they had similar demographics, not similar populations, so I just divided it by five to get to our size. That's probably too complicated to just explain, but if you'd like to meet with me and talk about what I think it could be, again, it's unpredictable, because you, we don't know, or we don't have a specific number we can budget for this, anyway. So just stop by if you want to talk about it more.
This is something that we're required by statute to consider?
Just to consider.
In every odd year?
Mm-hmm.
Unless we already have it.
Unless we adopt it.
We don't have it, consider.
And there are only two counties, it's Los Alamos and Santa Fe.
That hat, Rowan?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, yeah, we've had the discussion in the past, and talking about how much that's not budgeted in, but I don't want it to be confused with our valuation freeze for the 65-year-old older, because they do get confused about that. Commissioner Ramos brought that up a while back, and I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't confuse with our valuation freeze for the low-income of 65-year-old older. Okay, so I just want to throw that out there.
Does that make sense? Any other questions at this point? No? Yes? Next item, O, approved/disapproved Resolution R 1703, Fleming Tank Road and Wind Canyon Estates Subdivision Community Area Improvement District Confirmation of the Assessment Role. Misha?
Commissioners, so with the assessment role hearing that's going to be going on on Thursday, at that hearing, you shall hear objections which have been filed. I just informed you none were filed, so the next step is a resolution to confirm the assessment role that we filed within the Clerk's Office last month. And if it's okay, can I move on to the next resolution, or do you want to read that one first?
Sure, let me read. Item P is approved/disapproved Resolution R 1704, Publication of Illegal Notice of Intent to Adopt Ordinance Number 01701, Fleming Tank Road and Wind Canyon Estates Improvement District Assessment Levy.
And so with the second resolution after that, then we'll be doing a notice of intent for the actual ordinance. That ordinance will allow the county to assess the role against those properties, and that ordinance, this is just a notice of intent, the ordinance will not actually be heard until the February meeting. Any questions?
I have no.
Mr. Chairman?
I've been reading this, doing this ordinance for two years, so...
The assessment district takes such a long time, and there's so many steps. If you have a question, you know, sit down with me or Misha, and we'll be happy to walk you through the 20 steps I have to go through there.
A notice of intent to think about it, and then that...
Yeah, it takes two years to do anything.
Any more questions or discussions? Next item, you will recess as the Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Grant County Indigent Hospital and Healthcare Claims Board, so this is another one of the duties that is laid out in statute, as you also serve as Indigent Claims Board. And technically, I need to update the agenda, it's no longer called Indigent, it's only Healthcare Claims Board. These are claims that qualify under the Healthcare Claims Act, the section in statute, I can get that for you if you'd like some more reading. And what we have in front of you is, under item Q, that is approved/disapproved December 2016 Health Plan Claims in the amount of $29,445.91. Those are also found in your packet, itemized out individually, so you can see what those are for. These, these claims, and most of them are for inmates that are transported to the hospital. Our inmates are considered indigent under our policy, and that's where most of these are instances where maybe we didn't have medical staff on site, or it was beyond what their capabilities were. If the RN was gone and we simply had a CNA, they are transported to the hospital and billed under what used to be called the Indigent Fund. And I will get that to all of you to review. So it is your responsibility. We've reviewed these, the hospital's reviewed these, we're presenting them to you as accurate and correct as the best of our knowledge for you to approve, acting as that particular board. Is that clear, Miss M?
Pretty much. So I have, I have a question about this, and, you know, this may simply be a case of, I don't know what I'm asking, but, so, so these are claims that are made on behalf of prisoners, that the county is paying for the services of GRMC, to give medical care to these prisoners. Where does the money come from? How is the Indigent Fund funded?
The Indigent Fund is funded with the second increment of, the second one-eighth increment of gross receipts tax. That also is explained in the act. You have the, you, by statute, you have to place the second one-eighth to go towards indigent healthcare. That's what funds your Indigent Fund. You can put another increment in there if you need that. We actually used to have two one-eights going in there, and about a year ago, I proposed to the Commission to move that third one-eighth back to the Indigent Fund, because I thought we needed that money there more than just sitting in the Indigent Fund for the state to eyeball and take that away, which they've also been looking at for many, many years. So it is an increment of your gross receipts tax that funds Indigent.
At one time, that was all used for match money. We would send it to the state, they would send it to the Centers for Medicaid, Medicaid, and we would, we would basically put the whole amount, whatever an eighth was at the time, 300,000, so it was 600,000, and we would get back four times that amount for the hospital, and that was the Indigent Fund in the days when we were getting big numbers.
For ACA, right?
Right.
Okay.
And that's when, when they changed with ACA, they took that fund and moved it over to fund ACA, and there was no longer matching money to come back to our hospitals.
So then, second part of my question is, I'm assuming that, you know, what we're talking about is people who don't have the capacity to pay, and why isn't that covered by Medicaid? That's where I'm really headed with this, is why isn't it covered by Medicaid?
Well, actually, it is now with the Medicaid extension, most of it is, but these may be individuals who have slipped through the cracks or don't have...
They haven't been signed up for Medicaid?
Correct. So as Brett kind of explained, the whole, this whole act has changed considerably since ACA, with, and also with the expansion of Medicaid, all of those things, we're seeing smaller claims because these folks are covered in other areas. But these, that's why I say these are primarily claims from the jail for individuals who do not have insurance or are not covered.
And does it average about $30,000 a month?
This one is a little high, it fluctuates, it just depends on what's going on out there, who we have, what our numbers are.
Because that's about...
This one's a little...
This is an average of what, about $300,000 a year? I'm just thinking of it from the point of view that, you know, what, how could we lower that number? Yeah, how could we lower that number?
You've got two problems. One, I get, not to be flippant, but I mean, I'm used to seeing 1.7 million in that category just a couple years ago, so I guess I don't, I don't consider $29,000 high. The other thing is, is that one-eighth that you have, you can't use it for anything else. So if there's a way, if somebody isn't, I mean, care costs, I mean, there's no doubt, this is truly uncompensated care. If there's a way that we can, can... If there's a way that we can legitimately, legally get some money to the hospital, it's not really our job to fight that. I don't, in my opinion.
I see what you're having. And that's why I'm asking the question.
I want them to find those people that have slipped through the cracks and not just take that on the, you know, and not get paid for it, so.
Okay. So that does clarify some of what I was, some of the reason why I had the question is because I didn't understand that you couldn't move the one-eighth to something else. So in essence, what you're doing is you're supporting the hospital by being able to pay these claims on people who couldn't otherwise pay. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
And in the event that your amount of claims or what you are spending, you can always transfer another portion of your grocery receipts tax from another increment into that if need be. But you absolutely have to spend your second one-eighth on indigent population for healthcare.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a question?
If I might. You said that the detainees are indigent by policy. I wonder if someone could explain the rationale to that policy? And I imagine it's a rare case, but it does seem possible that some detainees would be covered by family, private insurance.
They are. Several years ago, you would probably be hard pressed to find a county whose indigent policy did not include their inmate population as indigent and covered under their indigent policy. Every county has their own indigent policy as outlined by statute we're required to have. So if the inmate has insurance, we absolutely are going to bill that first. If they have Medicaid coverage or Medicare, then they would be billed through that. This is in the event that they have no other option. And also, it saves the county money because we're only billed at approximately 70%, so this is actually cheaper than paying what the full amount would be. So it's beneficial.
So the fact that they're indigent by policy doesn't mean we don't try to pursue other sources?
Correct. We pursue that first.
And then you just touched on my second question, which is the difference between the billed and the approved. That's just some kind of negotiated 70%?
That is correct. Which is that contractual adjustment.
It doesn't look like it's a consistent percentage of adjustment. It's on the table being used somewhere.
Right, it's all over the place, and that is, we could probably get Mrs. Allred from the hospital to explain that to you, but it's based on a percentage of what they're able to.
One little fat that a headache might have gotten adjusted down a little further.
There, I have a lot of issues with what is on here, and that's something that the healthcare provider hears from me on a frequent basis. I have a real hard time with a $3,000 headache.
And that would be a healthcare provider that's contracted with the detention center?
It looks like they gave a CAT scan for the headache or something. And last, do you have an idea whether the one-eighth increment is going to generate more money than we're now spending since it has dropped so much?
What we, well, you never know. There's options in that act. You can transfer money in or you can only pay up to what that increment generates, and then you would like roll those claims over to the next year. But we don't, we've not had that instance yet where we did not have enough money to cover the claims. And we also utilize that increment of grocery receipts tax to pay for healthcare at the jail. We use that as well.
So it can be used for something else as long as that something else is related to medical care?
Indigent population. And inmates are considered indigent.
Okay, that makes me feel more comfortable. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, Alicia? No? Okay. All right.
Yes, Mr. Lambert left? He danced, okay. Mike, you want to go ahead and be first?
Chairman, Commission Members, submit my report for the reporting period December 9, 2016 to January 5, 2017. Item number one, all these procedures, that status remains the same, being revised and reviewed. Item number two, the detention facility update, detention facility currently has one vacancy, and we are looking at electronic upgrades are being reviewed for future possible replacement. Item number three, that item remained the same, it's the facility assessments. Item number four, the training update, this month we have one officer continuing his remedial training. Sergeant Galindo is our training officer, is currently scheduled, a refresher course for training 2017 for all department personnel. Detention Center is currently using the New Mexico Association of Counties' online training and certification program for all personnel. What we're asking is that the sergeants, at least once a month, have one officer on their shift that go through this online training and get some additional training and certification. And this is free of charge through the Association of Counties. Item number five, on our intervention, the inmate support program, the inmate support subgroup will be meeting this month, prepares a support document for presentation for all personnel so we can submit this, these documents to the legislative representative during the session. Item number six is a recognition program, and this is a recognition award program that we do monthly, and we have nominations from the department personnel. This month, Grant County Detention has recognized two corrections officers for this month's employees of the Month Award Program, this officer Lisa Lucero and Officer Yvette Chavez. And they're being recognized for the dedication to the detention center, the unselfishly volunteered their time to work during the holiday weekend in order to ensure the detention center had sufficient coverage for some unscheduled medical situations that we had in transports. The officers have continuously supported the detention center and continue role models for other personnel. The work ethics have not been overlooked, and we'd like to thank them for their support. And for that reason, I selected for the Employees of the Month. Item number seven, on our detention statistics, the Grant County Detention Facility, the average daily population for January 5, 2017 is 87, one more than last month. High population males, 81, two more than last month. High population females is 16, three less than last month. Currently, for January 5, 2017, there were 93 inmates booked in the facility. And between January 17, 2016 and January 5 of 2017, again, that's the one-year report that I give you, so you can look at the average daily population during that one-year period. Last year, for 2016, there were 83 individuals that were confined to the facility. The average length of stay for this reporting period is 38.42 days. And again, I submitted for you the ARC report, which is breakdowns facilities, holding capacity by pod, and also the CGAIDA survey of jail inmate confinement report. All the statistics that I've given you show a slight decrease in activities compared to last month. Item number eight, on our monthly agency arrest total for December 2016, Silver City Police Department had 69, Grand County Sheriff's Department 31, New Mexico State Police had 11, Bayard Police had four, Santa Clara Police had eight, Mardi Police had two, and that was the rest of the statistics we had. And currently, we are holding seven prisoners for Hidalgo County. Detention Facility, item number nine, Detention Facility had 12 district court transports, Division One magistrate court, we had 26, Division Two magistrate court, we had six, municipal court, and Silver City was zero, municipal court in Santa Clara was zero, and Bayard Municipal Court was also zero. During this reporting period, we had seven medical transports, and the total number of transports equals 51 as compared to 81 in the last month. And item number 10, probation violations, we had 40 individuals in the facility that had probation violations. We had three that have been violated for parole violations. Probation violation inmates awaiting transport are sentencing to either the Department of Corrections or Rehabilitation Center. During this reporting period, we have seven right now that are awaiting transport. The average time from judgment, sentencing, to transport is about 40 days. Total inmates charged with warrants, amount of 52, and the total number of special management inmates, and on January 5, the amount is at 10. Can I report, sir?
If I have any questions?
What's a special management inmate?
Special management, sorry, it's a criteria that, it's fairly new with the development, and it was what all the detention centers are doing around the state right now. And what we do is whenever an inmate comes in, we screen those inmates for any special needs that they may have, any illnesses they may have, or any other issues that may come up psychologically or wherever. So we categorize them into a special management unit. We've done away with the segregation portion of the facilities, so individuals also fall into that category. We put them into, we put them into areas that we can watch them, we can do 15-minute watches on them in case they need those special needs, and so, and those are the inmates that we put into the special management category.
Thanks.
Commissioner Ra.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Cuddy. Towards the back, there's a breakdown of the confinees by whether they were convicted or not as of January 5, and it shows that all 93 were unconvinced. Is that accurate? And here, I'm displaying my ignorance probably, is that normal?
On which one?
Well, I'm looking at page 204 of this one that looks like a questionnaire you might fill out. It, we have three different things, and this is 204 of the last of the things, second section. It says, as of January 5, there were 93 confinees, and zero were convicted, and 93 were unconvinced. And that just seemed like a very large number of unconvinced residents, and I wondered if that was accurate.
Sir, those were the, those are the inmates that, the unconvinced ones are the ones that are waiting, that are in confinement now, awaiting either sentencing or some kind of a judgment.
And is it normal that 100% of the population of the detention center is awaiting something rather than having been convicted?
Well, it all depends on the court processor and their docket. Sometimes, whenever they, whenever they go to court, what happens is because of the attorneys and the judges, they will reschedule or they will ask for, they will ask for more time. So it just, it just, it sends them back into the facility until they can be scheduled. So it's really, it's really based upon the court docket and a lot of the attorneys, the district attorneys, the public defenders, and those types of things. Sometimes they're waiting for assessments, they're waiting for some kind of mental evaluations that are required either by the court or the judge.
So is it, one explanation for this that occurred to me is perhaps it's the case that once they are sentenced, they get transported somewhere else?
Right.
Is that true? Okay, so that would help explain why it's 100% that are unconvinced.
You know, it's actually very normal to have one or two that are convicted, maybe for a 90-day sentence or a 180-day sentence, but anything over 365 is automatically transferred.
Right. And as I understand it, that the number of 364-day sentences is increasing as a way of shifting state costs to the counties. And yet here, we're seeing none of that, zero, unless that's maybe wrong.
It's just one report on one day.
Yeah. Right. But a 364-day sentence is going to be in there for four years. You'd imagine you'd catch a bunch of them on a given day. Okay, well, I guess.
I'm not arguing the validity of the report.
I would hate to have more experience to ask more questions.
But I know that we seldom have had enough convicted inmates to even put together a crew where we could pick up trash on the road. We've been asking for that for all six years we've been here, and maybe one time in six years, we had enough to actually go do that. So it's really, that does not shock me.
One thing is a good thing, I suppose.
It's a good thing, it's a bad thing.
It's a surprising thing. So the folks who are in there awaiting something, and I imagine that there's a variety of things they're awaiting, does that imply that they were unable to make bail or that bail was denied?
It does, it is a factor, yes, sir. There are some individuals that come in there that are arrested on misdemeanor charges that whenever they come in, they, again, wait for the court process, and until that time, if they're not, if they're not a condition released by the judge, then they wait in the facility and they're incarcerated in the facility because they cannot make bond. And I think, I think the courts are addressing that right now, sir, as far as the individuals that cannot make bond, I think they're trying to pass legislation or if they're arrested for either petty misdemeanor or misdemeanor, then they will immediately be released either on their own recognizance or some other condition because they cannot make bond. So that should help as far as the detainees and the individuals that come in under those minor crimes.
And do you have an estimate of the 93 on this report? How many would be in that category of minor crimes?
I think, sure, if you look at my report, you'll see the majority of them are arrested on warrants.
Yeah, I didn't hear that.
Two of them, that's always very high, and also the probationers, that's always very high. Some of those can fall into those conditions because they violate the probation. Some of them are, they're charged with a petty misdemeanor or misdemeanor, they go out, they don't go to court, so a warrant is issued for them for failure to appear, and so they end up in jail, and then, so a lot of those fall into those categories. So if you're asking for percentages, it depends on, it is a factor, yes, sir. Some of them that come in there that maybe first-time charges, they can't make bond, but the majority of them, I think, are some of those categories, some of those numbers that fall within those warrant categories that because they failed to appear, either they didn't go back to court or a warrant was issued for them.
That makes sense. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, you're welcome. Your questions.
No apologies for good questions.
Well, Erin took care of all of my questions thanks for your report. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Sir? All right. Earl, I hope you're prepared for questions.
We're working on Loma Verde, we're putting that six-inch kappa base course on there that we haven't done yet, and we need to finish building that little water crossing. The problem is, there's still water running across it right now, so I'm hoping to get everything wrapped up over there by the end of this month. The contractor over there at Rosedale, I was over there this morning, they're still working on that drainage ditch, they're pouring concrete, and they're also hoping to be completely done over there by, by the end of this month. I did meet with OCAM or Engineers, Inc., whichever one you want to call them, they are planning to start that North Hurley project, probably Bundy, from what I understand, depending on what kind of weather rolls in this weekend. Other than that, it's just business as usual down there.
Questions for Mr. Moore?
I just wanted to let everybody know that Billy's in charge of roads now.
Roads.
Now that Commissioner Ramos is gone. So Billy's in charge.
Yeah, that's a new thing, but I do have a question. If somebody wants their road fixed, is it the wheel that squeaks the loudest gets the grease, or how do you determine what roads need fixing?
Well, the ones that, with the weather we've been having, what we've been doing is, whatever's the emergency, I mean, there's some of them roads down south that really get bad, and so we try and get where people can get in and out. About the time it dries out, where we can actually go back in there and start fixing things, another storm will hit. I've got some stuff out there at Clip that happened last spring that I still haven't been able to get back out there and get cleaned up and fixed properly. So it's going to take us a while, but if they just call down there at the road department, then we certainly go and take a look at it and just categorize it to see where we're at.
You're the one that makes the determination, you don't let somebody who makes the biggest threat?
No. No. It's all me, and believe me, I take the phone calls for it, too. And commerce is one of the big things, just so you know. I mean, the whole reason counties started maintaining roads was for commerce, so that comes prior to residential. Somebody needs to get a load of cattle out, they got to get a load of cattle out to get them sold, so. Any other questions? All right. Randy?
Chairman, members of the board, just real quick, I don't have a public works to. Just real quick, I don't have a public works director, as our public works director has left for another job. So I'm in charge. So, and that's also without airport manager. So, but I have confidence in the staff that business will run as usual, just maybe a little bit behind, so I ask people in our facilities, at the airport, shooting range, to be a little patient with me, I'm trying to get as much done as I can. We are going to tail that position as quickly as we can, along with the airport manager. Cindy from DWI, just so you know, that I, I do have her bringing in a quarterly report as well, to give you some numbers on, you know, incarcerations and DWIs. So you'll get more from her as well. On the fire side, we had a fire last night off Ridge Road, structure fire, no injuries, some damage to the structure, but we were able to, it wasn't a complete loss. So Tyrone was able to get on it to assist Silver Fire with that last night around 9:30. The courthouse, before Justin left, he did work with the courts to redo the flooring over at the, at the courtroom. That has been done, and everything's been put back in place. I believe they're holding court there today. I really don't have much, I've just been real busy right now. So unless you have any questions, that's really all I have right now.
Do you have questions? Are we employed at the shooting range now?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ramos, yes. We, we are employed, we do have an employee at the shooting range.
Good, good. Glad to hear that.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. No, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. So the shooting range board did, we just had a monthly meeting with them. They will come in front of you on Thursday to give you a report. They felt, as, as I talked to them, I think it's necessary that they give you kind of an update of what they see, where the shooting range is going, what they see, foresee in the future for it, the agreements and so forth and so on. So just to give you a heads up, you will hear from them in, in the public input.
Okay. I, I did get a call from a shooting range past member, and he saw the water line that was going through the Highway 180. And he thought it would be a great idea to get water to the actual office over there. Guess we're without water out there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Ramos, that's true. I got the same phone call. I don't know where we're at with that. I know that they are putting a water line, I think it was Santa Clara's water line. The, the question would be, how do we pay for that, and where we get the funds for that?
So we could probably start looking at that.
It, it, it might be something in the future that, that we can look at and see where we can actually tie in, depending on, you know, what the contractor is. I don't believe we can just go in there at this point now because it's not within the project, obviously.
Of course.
But it's something we can look at, and I did talk to the former board member as well. He called me, we had a discussion, and so that's where we are with that.
You know, that, that being said, though, Randy, this may be the exact time that you really ought to do it while it's still dry. Because tapping the dry lines, a lot of users are tapping the wet one.
Right.
At least get the tap lot, if, if we can find enough funds to do that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, I think you're right. The, the fact is, is that within the project itself is whether they will allow us to, I don't know what the, and I don't know if that's, you know, it's coming all the way from Marina's Valley, so I don't really know if that's Santa Clara.
It's, it's Santa Clara.
So, so it's their project. So it's something that we can discuss with the mayor, and maybe put something in place now, as they go by, so make it easier for us to tap it later. I don't know. But it's something I'll look at.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes. I think the reason for caution about doing a permanent improvement like that is my understanding is there's some concern about the permit from the Forest Service for the shooting range. And I imagine Thursday is a better time to get into those details. But unless we're confident that we are going to have that permit for many years, we might not want to spend money bringing water there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Ramos, you're right. It is Forest Service property. We do have an agreement with them. There has been a lack of communication between the county and the Forest Service. We did meet with them on the property. They did voice their concerns about that. We did, the board also knows about those concerns. So yes, you, you will hear some about that. I know that the chairman of the board, he's a firefighter in the game, because, Milo, Milo Lambert, did have some discussions, I believe, with the county manager a little bit, and I just, and that was one of the reasons I wanted him to come in public input, is to give you guys a full update on where we're going and, and issues that they have, and the Forest Service issues as well.
Well, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Misha?
Thank you, Chairman, commissioners. I'll start with Tukasa. We, we did get all the documents needed to start the bid process. We're working with the architect on that, and it, the advertisement's going to run for two weeks, should start on Thursday. So this Thursday, the 12th, then go, and then again, go back in on the 19th. We do have a pre-bid conference. These are non-mandatory for any of the contractors, but the pre-bid conference will be on the 31st, 10:00 a.m. here. And, and we hope to open up the bids on Wednesday, the 8th. So finally, we're getting this, some progress movement on Tukasa. The solar for the county buildings, I entered into an agreement with Triple H Solar to start the bid process on that per the directive from the commission, December 2016 meeting. So that's moving forward. He's the one that did the feasibility study also for us. LS Mesa, construction is, is still going on. We do have a meeting set tomorrow, tomorrow at 11:00 on the site to just do a site visit. But I was up there about a week ago, and the walls are up. So they're, they're not fully, just, just the framework, but the framing is up. Santa Rita Fire Station, we, we'll be doing the rebid. Hopefully, that'll be going out this month. That one got, got set down, so we had to restart the bid process on that. Colonial's 2017, I, I hit the submit button for the application yesterday evening, did get an email back that needed to add one more attachment. I got that sent over this morning, so hopefully we'll be good with that. And-
You'll get it again.
Yeah, get it again. We are applying for $700,000 for the continuation of Rosedale Road. We have to look at projects that are, are ready to move on, and as Earl said, Rosedale is nearing completion of the Phase 1. So if we do get the, the approval for this grant, we can continue on with. We should be pretty close, we think, with $700,000 to maybe finish the project, but we won't know until we get there. And then the comprehensive land use plan, I sent to all of you notes from the meeting that we had. And we're just moving forward. We should be starting some public meetings. I think we're shooting for some time in February, but I don't have that set yet. And then I just wanted to touch base on the regional water project, the easement that is on the agenda. If anybody has any questions about that easement, and if you want to get with me prior to the meeting, I can just kind of let you know why we have that easement and what it's for.
Okay. Any questions?
Is it possible to get a full copy of Mr. House's report? I asked him for a copy, and he sent me the same PowerPoint that I saw in the meeting. And I'm hoping that there's more to what the county received than that. Is there?
Um, I have several emails and different correspondence that I can put together and get-
Yeah, I'm not asking for emails, stuff like that, but basically, when, you know, when I went to see how he evaluated the cost effectiveness of different installations, the detail wasn't there. It was just the, the end number. So if he's giving you more, I would love that. And if not, I'll, I'll send him a note.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll dig through what I've got and see if there's anything that, that has additional information that I can forward to you.
Right.
And if not, I'll also send him a note.
Right. And I should have started with thank you, and thank all of you for, for pursuing that because it's certainly low-hanging fruit. I'm glad to see we're taking advantage of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but since Randy's gone and you're, you're next, I just want to update on the, on the conference center. Are we ready to-
Randy's got it.
Okay. Then I'll let you go.
I'll take the blink. Part of the issue that we're having is we have 14 HVAC units that were discovered when we went to turn those back on to see if they were functioning. 14 of those units are down. We are continuing to work with Train to find a temporary Band-Aid for that, and it's, and kind of explore some different options of what we have other than replacing those units, which would cost us about $200,000. So that's a little hangup that I would like to get resolved prior to opening. I am working on finalizing policies, procedures, and the rental schedule. Hope to have that ready. We have another RFP out for management services. This is the second round. That is due, those bids are due on January 25th. We've had a little bit more interest this time. I rewrote it, structured it a little differently, to hopefully find someone who's interested and capable of managing that facility. That's my opinion, and I've expressed this to you before, we cannot manage it as we did before. I don't, I don't think that's a wise choice to have someone's expertise to a building we've spent a considerable amount of money on. We need to, to approach this differently. I realize the public is anxious to get in there. I know that we're anxious to get in there, but I would like to make sure that we've done our due diligence and do things right prior to opening the doors. So I am taking the blink.
So that being said, I think what we have to do, though, is there's people already wanting to start renting it. We got to tell them no, or we got to tell them yes? We can't, we can't let them just stay hanging.
So, Mr. Chairman and the county manager? So that's basically what we're doing right now, because they, you know, the conference center was through Public Works Department, and the executive assistant was taking, but we have not allowed people to submit dates, or even give a date of opening, or a given date of, of any sort like that. So that's been, you know, maybe this is a good time to, to really let the public know, but we are not at that point yet. We'll probably, as, as I understand, the facility managing payment comes in, we'll, we'll handle it at the appropriate time. I, I don't know. They've asked about grand opening type things, and I said, I'm, I'm sure the county's looking at something like that. At that point, you'll know that I think the facility's ready to open. So no one has been given an okay for any dates at this point that I know of.
Now, on those 14 units, were they working prior to the construction?
Yes, they were. What we discovered is about a pin-sized hole in the coils that there's really not any explanation for. We've had Abby draft some letters to them. There's some different options we can look at, from a coating that you, is not proven to plug the hole. We can replace the coils, or we can replace the entire unit. We're looking towards possibly replacing the coils. We're also looking at testing the coating on three of the units to determine whether or not we feel that that might hold up before we spend any more money. And that's where we're at. With Justin leaving, this kind of has fallen in the cracks, so I am following up with Train on the possible testing of that coating first, before we, we spend money that we don't have to, if that will work.
So there must have been some work being done around them that caused these-
No, there, there wasn't.
No, okay.
It is unknown. Train say, has said anything from, well, it's the fumes coming from the, from the construction that caused this, it's something from the air that caused this, which I think is a completely bogus claim to make, because one of the units is on the Ace Hardware side, which there were no fumes, there's nothing that's changed at all. So it, it's been back and forth, and really, we don't know what the cause is, other than they have failed. And it is, you know, we're trying to make the statement that you have faulty units and faulty parts. And we will continue to fight that battle and, and get this resolved as quickly as possible.
And we want to make sure that we don't get into any situation where we're talking about threats and litigation or anything up here. We're going to start trying it here. We need to make sure that we, we do that right. If we need to have a, a closed session to, to go over the potential of threats and litigation, you may have other things that you need to talk to the new members on. Do you have any, not to interrupt your report, but is there anything hanging out there that we need to?
Yeah, anything on the subject.
No, not just for that. Yeah, is there anything that we need to let these guys know about, though?
We've had our dues and dues sessions.
We've had dues and dues.
How many, how many dues were there?
Two.
We will certainly update you, but right now, nothing's jumping out.
Okay.
So I don't think it violates any litigation issues to ask if the units were under warranty. I appreciate the direction you were going.
That's what I was going to ask you all. We don't know where this is going to head, so if, and if you'd like an update on the issue, you're welcome to come meet with me, rather than discuss, you know, a potential litigation issue out here.
Seems like under warranties are yes or no.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So who's, what professional, HVAC professional are you using to advise you?
Train. They installed the units. Well, they didn't install the units, they're, they're, they are their units, but as Abby and Brett has cautioned, how about we just have this discussion in my office, and I'll explain it to you.
Well, yeah, but my question is, I mean, it's not, but it is, you don't have any, you don't have a local HVAC specialist advising you?
Justin has used different HVAC, people on, on different projects. I am, the architect has been guiding us through this process with the individual that installed the units, as well as Train, where the units were purchased from.
Okay.
So it was a local person that installed them. They came from Train, were working directly with Train because they're their units. They worked fine when they were installed. It was when they were down that the issue has come up.
And when were they installed?
Uh, perhaps three years, three years ago, probably, whenever the exterior remodel was done. So-
Okay, thanks. They shouldn't be a problem.
So, that's, anyway, that, long story short, that's part of the hangup. So hopefully, we will have some responses this time to our RFP, and we can move forward. If not, I'll move on to Plan C, whatever that may be. Couple more things I just wanted to update you on. I do have a meeting scheduled this week with, he's the regional medical EMS, Eloy Medina. They're, they have personnel now to staff the member stations, so we will have some EMS coverage in that area. So I'll be meeting with them on how we want to work out that contractual relationship there. So excited to have that coverage out there, because that's a 45-minute response time on there, so that's-
And we have the building.
And, and the building is there. So it will be, that building will be staffed, hopefully, very soon. We emailed you an electronic packet for the first time. We are testing that out. Let me know, or Bernadette know, pros, cons, what you like, what you don't like. Because what our goal is, is to move away from these big thick books and have everything electronic. So you will have either a tablet or something in front of you with the same packet that we email you out in advance. So we need all the feedback we can get from you on that before we move forward, but we would like to get away from the time and the money that goes into these books every Just a couple updates, and I know that Gabe got the same emails. The Detention Facilities Reimbursement Act, this budget cut, we received another 9.78% cut to that. This goes back to the discussion about probation parolees that were housing that belonged to the state. This has been a fight with the state in Mexico back to 2007, when counties sued the state to pay for their prisoners. They are their prisoners, we're holding them, we're paying for them, all we ask is that they pay for their prisoners. Last fiscal year, we got about $66,000, so take another 10% off of that, it just keeps dwindling year after year after year. And yes, we have this discussion time and time and time again with our legislators. It is a statewide issue. I know that you heard it at FIPo, something that we continue to work on.
Another quick question. What, approximately what percent of the cost of housing the detainee are we getting reimbursement for? Or what's our loss per detainee?
I don't have the exact loss, but if you, if you look at his reports, approximately, usually a third of our inmates are probation violators, which means a third of those are the states. We get $66,000 a year to house those. It costs us approximately $60 a day, and that's- at least sixty dollars a day, and that's on the very low end, I think that's a very conservative estimate, probably a lot more than that. Um, so no, we're not getting anywhere close, um, the reimbursement that we should be for that.
You said this is a statewide problem?
Yes.
And so, are they talking about litigation from counties?
I, I believe that that's, that's come up, that that's happening again on the board of directors level, um, the counties have sued the state in the past to get paid for this, um, it looks like maybe that might be looming, um, on the horizon again.
And they've been successful on that?
Yes, but in two thousand and seven, um, it was a suit filed by the counties, actually it was San Miguel County that actually stepped forward, and it was the county that sued, um, the Department of Corrections. At that point, we received, it was a appropriation of about six million dollars that was distributed to the counties. We complete a survey on June thirtieth of each year that determines what our population is and what, um, how many of those are state, um, violators.
Okay.
And then that's what we're, that's what we get reimbursed for. But, the state has cut that funding, cut that funding in household, too, year after year after year, to where now I think there's two-point-two million dollars in there, two-point-one, something like that, that goes to every facility in the state. Um, so it's, it's, it's an issue that we fight constantly, um, and it's frustrating. Do you have a question? You look like you were gonna say something.
Well, the math that you, that you just told me, told us, in response to Alicia's question, uh, it looks like we're getting about six dollars per prisoner day from the state.
About ten percent? About thirty, thirty prisoners?
Thirty prisoners times three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, make that the denominator, put sixty thousand over it. Yeah, about six bucks per prisoner per day.
So we're getting about ten percent.
Yeah. I knew it's not very much. Not much. I don't know that you'll ever get a hundred, because what, what the lawsuit said they had to fund was in the five-million-dollar range, but that's still twice what we're getting now. Maybe three times.
So as you all know, the legislative session will be kicking off next week. Um, I've been reviewing pre-file bills, if there's anything that catches your attention and you'd like me to add to the list that we, we try to stay on top of, let me know. Um, been anxiously waiting for Harper to provide a summary to his three-hundred-plus-page tax bill, um, that hasn't dropped yet, as far as I can see. Um, Senator Sanchez has indicated he will drop a bill to, um, increase gas and special fuels taxes, um, and have that distribution go to the state road fund and the local road fund, which if he accomplishes that, that would be great, because that would help out our distribution to our local road fund and help the state road fund. I don't know how much tax on that'll get, but let's hope that it gets some.
Governor, I think he did support it all?
She probably won't sign it because of the tax case, but, um...
Harper's gonna get a second committee, so...
I don't either, but it's something definitely to watch. Um, also while in Santa Fe, I'll be making a presentation with Susie Trujillo on Tucasa. We've been invited to present at the symposium that INAT is hosting on county's role in behavioral health, um, in jails, um, and different, um, alternatives to putting people in jail. Money keeps dwindling, we look at different alternatives, so we've been asked to give a brief presentation, um, at that symposium.
Where is that?
During the INAT conference, it's, um, that's actually on Wednesday morning, it's on the, yeah, on the eighteenth. Um, and I think that's about it. Our office is busy as usual, any questions I can ask, answer for you at this point?
We'll get another shot up there. And on Thursday, too.
You do.
Okay. That concludes the agenda, unless anybody has any parting comments. Normally commissioners, uh, give their comments on the actual meeting day.
And a question, because when we ran over the agenda, I wasn't yet alert to the fact I should raise issues as they came up. Uh, the election approval of the chairperson and vice chair, and I understand vice chair is a new position, is it, uh, appropriate now to hear expressions of interest in those positions, or would you rather wait till Thursday to both hear those and to vote?
Usually what we do is we nominate on that day.
On that Thursday?
Mm-hmm. And we vote on that as a commission.
And that works for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I like some notice, but I can wait.
Obviously, I'm, I'm interested in being chairman again, just simply for continuity.
Okay. As long as that's taken care of, I'm okay.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Uh-huh.
Second.
There's a motion and a proper second to adjourn, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.